Resolution 275 urging the University of Wisconsin to halt plans to conduct maternal deprivation studies on monkeys. John Barnes and then up behind John is Rick Morall. And you have five minutes.
My name is John Barnes, a veterinarian, member of the Forum on Animal Research Ethics, a committee created by the UW and responds to Resolution 35, Dane County Board approximately three, four years ago. So I urge you to heed the information supplied to you by numerous, by way of numerous emails and neuroscientists and so forth have submitted things to you. Rick Bogle, Professor Hanson, Murray Cohen, among others. Hope you've received all these things. It is both very thorough and accurate in condemning the maternal deprivation protocols. So please read those. Okay. Those assigned to process the macaque monkeys on this research are all cooperators at the psychology lab, including veterinarians. They have assigned tasks, are expected to toe the line and not rock the boat. This is a UW system of control. So people are integrated into the system. Primatologists, primary investigators have lofty academic credentials, but this does not certify them as compassionate, morally centered, or ethically responsible. So money is what drives this research. I would encourage all of you to read The Nazi Doctors. This book covers the Holocaust and their role in it. This is what MDs were forced to into during the Second World War. The terms doubling and numbing were commonly used throughout. Doubling is similar to the Jack on Hyde scenario. Have two faces in which you could do things to animals, but you present yourself to people in a normal way. And numbing, of course, is desensitizing oneself from the horrors of what you're doing. Harry Harlow was considered by some researchers at the university as a monster in the mid-eighties. Today, we are considering the same crimes against primates being conducted by Ned Kaelin. UW is operating under conditions of impunity for both the community and numerous researchers worldwide. I'm sure you've seen submissions from universities in California and various places. UW acts much like the military, sanitizing their mistakes, not admitting them at all or hiding what they're doing. As a member of this committee, this Forum on Animal Research Ethics, I have witnessed firsthand the denial of Ed Kaelin, among others, to be transparent about any aspect of his maternal deprivation research. They've denied presentation to the public. Meaningful information could be gained on the consequences of isolation of infants without maternal care or love by conducting epidemiological studies at places such as refugee camps or remote orphanages, or by compilation of such data from the annals of clinical psychology. So there's so many sources of the information that's, you know, supposedly being sought here through valid established entities. After one of the fair meetings last spring, Don Kubla, who's a former member, now resigned. And I sat down to discuss, to talk to Eric Sagrin, who is here today, head of the UW Animal Resource Center. And we stated that this committee was a failure because none of the question of research, researchers in specific areas such as AIDS and so forth denied their participation. For years, a presentation showing a day in the life of a monkey was demanded by non-UW committee members. And even this presentation was denied, which seems fairly innocuous. Why? Because cruelty exists at all levels of primate research. For the UW to disclose the information would be damning to their reputation. So I support Al Matano's proposed 275, and it's been a long time overdue.
Thank you very much, Mr. Barnes. Next up is Rick Morall.
Hi. Thank you for the chance to speak. It seems to me that there are two important questions to answer as we consider this resolution. The first one is, is Ned Kaelin's experiment ethical? The second question is, if it's not ethical, does the Dane County Board of Supervisors have an obligation to take a position on it? Or is it appropriate for the county board to take a position on it? About 15 years ago, an ethicist commented on what he called at the time "a near consensus" among ethicists that the status quo in animal research is ethically indefensible." A near consensus among ethicists that the status quo of animal research is ethically indefensible. This is coming from an expert, somebody who spends his life studying these issues. More recently, two years ago, another ethicist referred back to that comment and stated that that near consensus had become more intense in the intervening years. In other words, there is a very strong consensus among the experts, people who do ethics as a profession, that the status quo in animal research is not ethically defensible. Some of UW's own bioethicists opposed Kaelin's experiment. One of the committees that reviewed the protocol and voted on it has a bioethicist, a tenured faculty member on the committee. He voted against this protocol. Another well-known, well-respected bioethicist at UW Madison, who has served in the Obama administration, said to me personally, "In the context of bioethics, people and monkeys should be treated the same." This is a nationally or internationally known and respected bioethicist at UW who says, "In the context of bioethics, people and monkeys should be treated the same." Obviously Ned Kaelin is not treating the monkeys the same way that we would treat people. His experiment is in fact not at all ethical. It is profoundly immoral. So the second question is, is it appropriate for the county board of supervisors to take a position on it? Well, UW Madison has a long history of not willing to become engaged in this ethical issue. The state, a few years ago, on request of UW Madison, extended the exemption for biomedical research, so-called bona fide scientific experiments, to include everything UW Madison might want to do to a non-human animal. Blanket exception, like exemption to whatever they want to do to animals. So there is no other body that's enforcing any limit to what UW chooses to do as long as the committee approves the experiment. And yet we have this experiment that seems quite immoral to us. So what is the right response from any elected, body of elected officials to what frankly is a moral atrocity in our own backyard that others are ignoring? It seems to me that the bare minimum, the very least we could do is take a position on it. In fact, I'd say that we all have a moral obligation to take a position on it and to stand against it. Because there is no hope of change if we don't at least take that very small first step. And if we don't take that very small first step and take a position and speak out, frankly, I think we're all complicit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morall. Next up is Joseph Wadimacher.
Hello, I'm Joseph Wadimacher. I'm 12 and I am against animal testing. And I believe that any form of animal testing is inhumane, cruel, and wrong. And I ask you to imagine being kidnapped from your family at a very young age and being isolated in a small cage, being traumatized and tortured every day, and constantly having blood and other fluids taken from your body against your will, and only to be murdered a few months later. I hope you make the right and humane choice. Please make this animal experimentation stop. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Mr. Barnes.
Well, good evening. My name is Pam Hart and I'm a longtime Wisconsin resident. I got my undergraduate degree here as well as my law degree. I'm also the director of the animal law program at the Animal Legal Defense Fund. We have over 100,000 members. We are a national organization and I'm here tonight on their behalf. As a lot of people have talked about, the horrors of these tests include taking the newborn monkeys from their mothers, who have oftentimes been restrained or drugged against their will while the babies are removed. They are then sent into solitary confinement for weeks. They are exposed to anxiety-inducing stressors like live snakes, enforced to undergo painful skin punch biopsies, and stressful brain scans. After this torture, they are killed before their second birthday. The university gained notoriety in 1960s when Harry Harlow first isolated infant primates from their mothers and the effects were devastating. The babies went into shock, huddling in the corners of their cages, clutching themselves, rocking, and self-mutilating. Today, such methods are considered extreme and unethical, and some have credited Harlow's studies with galvanizing the animal rights movement. Researchers at the university claim that these methods are necessary for understanding anxiety and depression in humans. Other researchers, however, have questioned this argument, pointing to painless methods that better assess the cognitive aspects of these disorders. The maternal separation method, which one researcher calls hopelessly crude and antiquated, intentionally traumatizes baby monkeys in the worst ways imaginable. An increasing consensus rightfully criticizes these tests for causing needless suffering in babies in order to study what can be done more directly by looking at human brain activity. The Animal Welfare Act protects animals exploited from cruel and unnecessary experiments. The law requires that every protocol involving animals be reviewed by a committee, which evaluates whether the methodology of the study is sound and whether any animal suffering in the study is justified. It is not clear that such an evaluation occurred here at the university. Under the act, every member of the approval committee must be given notice of the planned tests. But UW's protocol only allowed a few members to approve these tests, purposely leaving out a full committee, which included several members opposed to these cruel tests. If such tests are to be conducted, a full debate by the committee and the public is needed to confirm that the benefits of the research are justified by the extreme cruelty of these methods. The tests are cruel and unnecessary, and the protocol process is likely unethical and illegal. That's why groups like the Animal Legal Defense Fund have urged the USDA, Animal and Plant Health and Inspection Service, to investigate the protocol of these controversial tests at a publicly funded university. On behalf of my organization and our many, many members, I urge you to support Resolution 275. Thank you for your time tonight.
Next up is Sue Miller.
Thank you for letting us have this opportunity. I'm going to read from my letter. "As a concerned citizen of Dane County, I ask that you consider the following in making your decision regarding 2014 Res. 275. The goal identified in Ned Kaelin's explanation of goals in the protocol reads in part as follows: There is a significant need for the development of new treatments aimed at intervening in early childhood, so that the long-term chronic effects of these illnesses on mental and physical health can be reduced or even prevented. If the goal truly is to develop new treatments aimed at intervening in early childhood, the research need not include subjecting yet more rhesus monkeys to severe adversity. Early physical trauma, sexual abuse, abandonment, and psychological abuse is relatively common in humans. We, as a society, and I would hope Professor Kaelin and the highly educated members of the Wisconsin Psychiatric Institution clinics, are already acutely aware of the effects of severe adversity to infants, whether they be infant rhesus monkeys or infant humans. In fact, the goal is to develop new treatments aimed at intervening in early childhood. The research protocol need not include additional torture. If intervention is the goal, a reasonable research protocol would more logically include methods for early identification of the children who are either at risk or have already experienced the severe adversity, not creating more victims, monkeys, or humans. In an effort to justify this unnecessary and horrific research, the chairman of the Letters and Science IACUC, Craig Beridge, has stated, quote, "It's not like Dr. Kaelin invented this approach. He's piggybacking on decades of research, and that research has led to discoveries that have benefited people. The way we rear children these days stems from Harry Harlow's work. I challenge Craig Beridge, Dr. Kaelin, the members of the IACUC, and anyone else who would condone this research to tell me what exactly parents in 2014 are doing differently thanks to Harry Harlow. Please vote in favor of Res. 275 and put an end to the useless torture of the animals at the University of Wisconsin. Thank you for your time."
Thank you very much. Next up, Jerome Riss.
We all know that mothers are important to developing a healthy, mentally healthy, and physically healthy child and adult. For many, many years, this study has continued without demonstrable results, killing legions of primates. I have a fantasy that perhaps we could use the funds that have gone into this or in any future ones, praise God, no, for helping people who are having trouble being a mother and in direct aid to people, which would then produce the healthy child and adult. I would, these would be a direct, there would be no experiments other than finding the mothers who need help. We need to have more and more mentally healthy, physically healthy people. I think it is very presumptuous of our species to think we are the only important ones. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, Susan Shapannick.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am in support of the Resolution 275. I'm very grateful for the brave co-sponsors that have come forward already, and I dearly hope that you will pass this resolution, and I commend you on your bravery if you do. Why do I support Resolution 275? I really, in my gut, feel that this research, the maternal deprivation studies on the rhesus monkeys here, really does not justify its end. As I understand, the reason for this research is to find improvements in drug therapies for a spectrum of mental health diagnoses and conditions, everything from anxiety, depression, psychosis, et cetera. I'm also strongly objecting to any of my taxpayer money, money that I earn. I make a low wage, and if one dime went to this research, I would object. I also want to tell you something more personally. I would be someone for whom the research is supposed to benefit. I've been in therapy and counseling and on mental health medication for about 25 years. It has been helpful to some extent. I think I understand the fear these monkeys will feel. From a human perspective, as a child, I witnessed all kinds of horrors in my home. I grew up in a very traumatic home. For example, there was domestic violence, there was incest, there was sexual inappropriate behavior, there was alcoholism in both parents from the time I was about eight years old. In fact, had the Kenosha County Social Services ever been alerted, which they never were, I probably would have been removed from my home and into adoptive care. So I'm trying to give you a picture that, that it was very rough, very rough. And that is the same kind of conditions that they're trying to set up for these little monkeys to study the cortisol, stress levels, et cetera, et cetera. So I'd say that's pretty close in terms of the fear and the repetition that even one of these monkeys is going to feel when it reaches into a box for a treat and sees a king snake looking back at it before that snake even has a chance to strike that monkey. In my opinion, I think energy and efforts on the part of the researchers, and I do not disparage these people as human beings, but I think that it would be best spent on what has worked for many people, including myself. Four years ago, I found what I call my spiritual home. This is a non-denominational spiritual community center here in Madison. Community, it was very important, and I have a community there, finally for the first time perhaps in my whole life. A sense of belonging is important. There's also other modalities that do not involve only medications. For me, what I have derived benefit from is yoga and dancing and singing. I sing monthly in a karat group. Meditation, I've derived a lot. Herbology, you know, I mean, the UW has its own integrative health clinic, medicine at the UW. Okay, I'm almost done. And so I say, that's great, let's further this research. Do my meds cure my times of low energy and panic? No, not at all. Maybe I'd be worse off without them, I really don't know. But I am doing much better than ever before in my life of 58 years, and it's because of way more than the 20 milligrams of Selexa I take every day. Thank you, and I am appealing to your humanity.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time tonight. Robert Streifer. Let me begin by noting that I don't speak today as a representative of the university in any way, although I'm a faculty member there. Today, I speak to you as a PhD bioethicist with familiarity with the research under discussion and also with the large and well-developed literature on the ethics of animal research that exists. From an ethics perspective, and I want to speak today particularly to the point of the ethics of the research under discussion. From an ethics perspective, there are several overarching questions that need to be answered when one is evaluating the use of animals in research. First are two questions about the benefits of the research. How significant are the expected benefits and how likely are they to occur? Second is a question about the harms of the research. How bad is the research for the animals involved? How much will they be harmed, either physically or psychologically? Will they suffer? And if so, for how long and how intensely? And finally, is a question about the independent moral importance of the animals and how that compares to the kind of moral importance that human beings have who are the intended beneficiaries. At one extreme view, at one extreme is the view that animals are so morally unimportant that any research use of them, no matter how much harm they suffer, is justified if it can be reasonably expected to lead to some benefits to humans. At another extreme is the view that animals are so important that no harmful research of animals is justified, no matter how large the benefits to humans. I find myself in between these extreme views, as I expect most people do. Deciding on the morally acceptable trade-off between the harm to the animals and the benefits to the humans then requires deciding how their moral importance compares to ours. Some animals, I think, have no independent moral importance whatsoever. Sorry? Sponges and fruit flies, for example, in my book, don't make the cut. Other examples, such as great apes or dolphins, have something that's very close to the same moral status as we do, although I still think it's somewhat less. Where do monkeys fit into this scale? Well, I think that they're much closer to the end with great apes and dolphins than they are to the fruit fly and the sponge. We should take the harms that we do to them very seriously, and the greater the harm, the more seriously we need to take it. This means, in order to justify causing them to suffer a great deal, we need an especially large benefit, and we need to be relatively certain that that benefit will obtain. This is the standard by which I evaluate this kind of research, and it's something that much of the research that UW does, it's a standard that much of that research meets. In this case, however, I think the research does not meet that standard, and that explains why I have been opposed to this research. This study, by taking baby monkeys away from their mothers at birth, subjecting them to numerous tests that will cause fear and anxiety, and finally killing them, is indisputably going to cause them a great deal of harm and a great deal of psychological suffering. We already know that this kind of rearing for monkeys without their moms negatively affects serotonin levels in the animal's brains, which affects how happy or sad they are, and that it causes a tremendous amount of anxiety. Indeed, of course, the protocol is designed to study the effects of early adversity. We also know that this anxiety can reach a point where finally, in a disturbingly large number of cases, monkeys that have been raised without their mothers engage in what is referred to as self-injurious behavior, and this is widely reported in the peer-reviewed literature. Jean Sackett, who is currently a professor at the Washington National Primate Research Center, and who is a primate researcher himself, and who was a post-doc under Harry Harlow, who was a pioneer of this rearing technique here at UW, has been quoted as saying that Harry, referring to Harry Harlow, discovered that if you rear two infants together, it's almost as bad as total isolation. Nobody in their right mind, who knew Harry Harlow's work, would raise rhesus babies in pairs. And indeed, I note that the PI of this research in question has himself said that total social isolation would not be acceptable to do with rhesus macaques. So the effects, the psychological effects of this kind of research are, although undoubtedly not identical to, they are though very similar to the kind of effects that humans would experience, and indeed, that's part of, and indeed, that's part of the reason why these are often selected as models to be used in this kind of research. Although I hope that this research, assuming it does continue, will produce new information that will contribute to our helping the many people who suffer from anxiety or depression, I nonetheless don't think that this amount of suffering and this intensity of suffering is ethically justified by that speculative hope. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Annalise.
I was, I have something sort of prepared and lots of quotes that I was going to give you, but I just received an email before I came, and I'm sure that some of you haven't gotten it, and I think this is warrants being read. So I'd like to read it. It's from Marius Maxwell. I am a practicing neurosurgeon, it's a statement in support of Resolution 275. I am a practicing neurosurgeon and have had 30 years of basic and clinical neuroscience research experience while training at Cambridge, Oxford, and Harvard Universities, being at the latter institution for 14 years. I have a PhD in the molecular genetics of brain tumors and experience the extraordinary advances in imaging and other neuroscience technologies on a daily basis, as I treat my patients with a wide variety of degenerative neoplastic and traumatic brain and spinal disease. I am therefore frankly both mystified and saddened by this attempt by the University of Wisconsin-Madison researchers to seek approval for a study using an outdated monkey model in maternal deprivation experiments, when so many new technologies are at their fingertips, which study those very human victims of this trauma. As a single example of such a new technology, I follow the exploding functional MRI literature closely and found 13,600 results when I searched maternal deprivation and functional MRI a short time ago on Google Scholar. Functional MRI is a powerful technique that allows visualization of anatomic changes in brain chemistry that occur in real time in response to maternal deprivation and other devastating events. It is most useful when applied to human subjects. It is one of several powerful research avenues used to non-invasively study the traumatic and long-lasting effects of humans who have suffered the most profoundly cruel event of maternal deprivation. There are many other examples well-suited to the clinical neuropsychological research of those unfortunate people who bear the lifelong scars of maternal deprivation. Biomedical research is currently moving with the times and experiencing a sea change in leaving the use of animals to model human disease processes. Many recent meta-analytic studies have shown absolute failure of animal model experimental data to translate to the human clinical conditions. Predictably, though, animal researchers who can do nothing else but animal research repeatedly attempt to promulgate their demonstrably flawed models. It is an embarrassing, repetitive spectacle of naked self-interest, seeking to trump ethics and truth. A researcher who has used animal models for his or her career will resist forced adaptation of new invalid research techniques because they have no other background in such cutting-edge technologies such as MRI, with which to demonstrate proficiency and experience before grant funding committees. committees. Their grants will therefore not be funded, and their careers and livelihoods will be abruptly curtailed. This is the animal researchers' problem today in 2014. This sheer pecuniary, I can't pronounce correctly, pecuniary and professional self-interest of a few researchers at the UW-Madison to pursue outdated and invalid monkey maternal deprivation studies must not be allowed by the university department involved or by its board of regents. Why does the UW-Madison persist in missing the wave of new technological research in order to languish in a fetid backwater of outdated animal model usage? The Dane County Supervisors must act now by approving Resolution 275 and place UW-Madison on a new path of valid, ethical, and clinically beneficial research endeavor. UW-Madison is entrusted with educating a new generation of researchers, hopefully one which justly spurns these antiquated, invalid, and patently cruel animal models. This new generation must also be imbued with a deep and irredeemable sense of the ethics and morality of science, something completely lacking in the current prop of UW-Madison researchers if this reprehensible issue is representative of the institution as a whole.
About 15 seconds.
I've got two sentences. To subject infant monkeys to maternal deprivation experiments when so many new modalities exist to study human beings who are able to articulate their lifelong anguish and participate willingly in experiments with MRI and drug trials if they emerge is simply unacceptable. Last sentence. The student body and faculty of UW-Madison will suffer greatly by association if this cruel and unnecessary monkey maternal deprivation study is approved, both through lost opportunities of cutting-edge technology experiences and by donning the dark shroud of invalid and immoral animal research.
Well, I just wanted to thank those of you who are so concerned about the maternal deprivation studies, and also the co-sponsors who brought this forward, Resolution 275. I'm coming to you as a former researcher, and that's, I'm taking a personal stance here. And not only am I concerned about this study, but I'm also concerned about the regulations that are involved in every study, private and federally funded by the USDA, so that is what you're getting right now. And that for a rhesus monkey, per rhesus monkey is 4.3 square feet per monkey for the area, and 30 inches in height, and that is the minimum guideline. Most of them are pair housed, but if they fight, they do get singly housed. There's abnormal behavior because of the species inadequate environment, and because I worked in a lab from 1999 to 2004, and I grew close to 97 rhesus monkeys, and I really got to discover their intelligence and individual personalities, and their individual forms of abnormal behavior, and how they were reacting to the species inadequate environment. And then reading the grant proposal, you know, we were using the similarity of the monkey to the human as a way to justify the funding, and so I thought, you know, given that, we could at least try to improve their welfare, and then I started thinking about, you know, maybe we could form a primate sanctuary, because I had networked with other primate sanctuaries across the US, and other research labs were retiring their monkeys and giving back to them, and it was kind of an ethical compromise, you know, but then, when I was in the lab, and there were some that were in support of this, but I was assisting a research veterinarian in a procedure after a monkey was injured, and I told her about forming the sanctuary, and she said that giving back to monkeys was a little too animal rightsy for her taste. And this coming from a research veterinarian, I kind of paused and thought, I paid all this money for this education at the UW, and I'm looking up to a research vet that says that to me. It's desensitized rhetoric, and I think it's unfair to future students to be looking up to a person like that. And so when I spoke up for their welfare and improving the data collection techniques through positive reinforcement training, I brought literature to the supervisors. I was well-liked, I thought I could be the one to bring about change, but within about three months, I was labeled an animal activist, and my after-hour duties and weekend duties for training these monkeys to reduce the stress, their stress, the after-hours were taken away from me, and then I could no longer improve the welfare for the 97 monkeys under my care. And so with that in mind, I decided to resign so that I could work on the system from the outside and move forward and raise funds to build a sanctuary and retire monkeys from out-of-state. But I just wanted to say that, you know, given that I was trained to think animal activists were ignorant and violent people, I was in the lab, I was so offended by this divisive labeling, and that I, it concerns me that any concern about welfare easily gets categorized in this and nothing gets changed. And so, I would really urge you, in addition to supporting Resolution 275, to please ask Colvance, they are in Dane County as well, and the UW, if you could please tour the facilities, maybe you've done that before, but also ask them about the procedures and view those, you might have to get TB tested, go through some hoops, but please do it. The oral dose at Colvance, giving them drugs. And then at the UW, if you could ask about the cheering procedures, as well as some other infant separation procedures, and then you can witness and evaluate and judge for yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Jen Reich.
Hi, I'm here to support Resolution 275, which opposes the most abhorrent acts of cruelty to primates that I know of. We all deserve to have a say in it, because it's our tax money that funds this NIH project, and number two, because this is our community. We set the standards based on our values, not the university. The university has shown that their standards of ethics are so abysmal that they consider the treatment of the primates in question humane. What is humane about the relentless abuse of newborn monkeys daily for a year until they're driven into psychosis and killed? But don't worry, they say they will actually be euthanized humanely. I think the Animal Care Committee enforces many small regulations, like keeping very clean cages, or feeding them on time and giving them water on time, but when it comes to inflicting torture on an animal, so long as it's nicely written up in a protocol, it's acceptable. Since primates are our closest living relatives, they're being used as our surrogates for research. But the other side of the coin is that they experience the suffering exactly as we do. So why leave the standards of ethics to a biased group of individuals who have a half-million-dollar stake in it, and additionally, the personal success of Kalen's private company? Are you surprised they didn't include the bioethicist in their decision? UW often cites individuals who object as animal rights extremists or activists. I, like many others, have worked in labs using animals, and I can tell you that the mice in the two research labs I have worked in have been treated infinitely better than primates, and this is, was at least for cancer research. Other people support animal work for AIDS, but still object to deliberate infliction of pain and torture on primates. We are mainstream people who have limits on what should or shouldn't be done, especially for low-yielding-type basic research. While psychiatric disease is real and relevant, relentless torturing of primates into having psychoses is horrific and unacceptable. It hasn't yielded cures in the past 60 years, so why keep doing it? Saying someday it might lead to something is like saying, I may build a spaceship, and someday I may get to another galaxy. Sure, it's possible, right? There are people out there who already have disorders that can be studied for best treatments, and perhaps even more people could be saved by studying best prevention techniques. I've read letters that have been coming in over the past few weeks from neurologists, psychiatrists, veterinarians all over the country, who have suggested that other techniques are much better and can be used as alternatives, and have agreed with the moral argument that this should never be done simply on the ethical question of it. The highest order of animals should have the most protection from suffering, not the least. They're like children. The study violates the 1985 Animal Welfare Act that requires their psychological well-being to be cared for. The university exploits its legal loophole to be exempted from animal welfare protection. They're basically pushing the limits to do any kind of ruthless experiment for any financial gain. What they don't factor in is the cost of human character. Not all pursuits of science are noble or holy. Like good scientists, we, the community, should all question thoroughly what we will allow. I think George Bernard Shaw said it well when he said, atrocities are not less atrocities when they occur in laboratories and are called medical research. So why am I just standing up for 40 of the 9,000 primates that are being experimented on in our city? My belief is that individuals do matter, that newborns shouldn't be isolated and stripped of their maternal bonds, stripped of their sane, healthy minds, harmed over and over until they're disposed of, like 40 test tubes. The co-sponsors of 275, and the medical community who have spoken out against it, both on the moral ground and the scientific ground, and the kind citizens of our community, give me hope to opposing the indifference of inflicting suffering on others.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
My name is Leslie Hamilton, and I am a resident, longtime resident of Wisconsin and Dane County, also a graduate of University of Wisconsin School of Letters and Science and the Law School. And I'm here today to ask that you vote in favor of Resolution 275. What I have provided for you today is page 17 of what's called the Protocol that was submitted to the university by Dr. Kalen. This document is actually probably more like 30 pages long, and I'll be reading just a few excerpts from the protocol. The protocol is intended to describe for the reviewing committee what will be done in detail to the animals that are used in animal research. It's presented to what's called the Institutional Animal Care and Use Committee, which, as its name suggests, suggests, and as is required by the Federal Animal Welfare Act, is required by law to review each of these protocols. This protocol was reviewed several times, I understand, over the course of a couple of years, and I believe that the research experiments have begun. Essentially, what you have here are three columns. On one column, you have an indication that these are 20 infant monkeys that will be, quote, surrogate peer rearred. So you understand what a surrogate is, it isn't like a human situation where you have a surrogate mother. In this case, it is essentially a towel wrapped around sort of a flexible spring. And the other side is a column that says mother rearred, those are the 20 comparison infants. In the middle, you have something called testing sequence, and on each side, you'll see the age of the infant monkey and what will be done to the monkey at that age, and as you see, both the mother rearred and the surrogate rearred, monkeys will undergo exactly the same procedures, and they will, in the end, at age one year to 18 months, be killed and their brains dissected to compare. So the difference between the two monkeys is how they're rearred, they're going to be undergoing, as I said, the same essential tests. You can see that at one to two weeks, each of the monkeys will undergo what's called a human intruder paradigm. That's a fancy way of saying that they'll be in a cage all by themselves, and a human being will walk into the room, in some cases, the human being will just show the profile, in other cases, make eye contact. Eye contact to a macaque is an extremely threatening thing, and that is why it's being used in these experiments. There's also blood samples in what's called a PET, that's like a, I don't know exactly how it's done, but if you've ever had a PET scan or know anyone who has cancer, they usually will undergo a PET scan. It's like an MRI or any other kind of, what they might call, non-invasive test. At two to three weeks, they, all the monkeys will undergo MRIs. At six weeks, again, we have the human intruder paradigm, blood samples and PET scans. Seven weeks, MRI. 12 weeks, human intruder paradigm, blood sample, PET scan. 13 weeks, MRI. 15 to 23 weeks, human intruder paradigm and blood sample. Also, they're taking samples of their cerebral spinal fluid, which would be a painful process. Again, 24 weeks, same PET scan, 25 weeks, MRI. 26 to 36 weeks, they have various other sorts of tests and observations that will take place. Then we move to the snakes. The snake involves, first of all, what they do is they train, they figure out what foods the monkeys really like. It takes them a while, and they serve, what, essentially, they put the monkey in a cage that allows them access through bars, just in the front of the cage, to a plexiglass box, and on the top of that box will be what they eventually determine to be the monkey's favorite food. After they've acclimated the monkey to that process of grabbing this food off of the top of the box, they will put the king snake in the box, and then observe what happens with the monkey, and then, of course, they'll do the blood samples, the PET scans, the MRIs, and finally, at one year to one and a half years, they will kill all of the monkeys and examine their brains. So, I would like you to, oh, I'm finished?
Yeah, if you could just wrap up.
Oh, all right. If you get a chance to look at the protocol itself, you will see in detail what is done with the monkeys for each of these procedures. The monkeys, when they're removed from their mothers, their mothers are anesthetized because it's so traumatic for both of them. When the monkeys are, when their blood is taken, the MRIs are done, the PET scans are done, the monkeys are strapped down to tables. They are put under using ketamine, which is an animal anesthetic. So, I'm sorry I took up all my time, I wanted to give you more detail of the typical day in the life of one of these monkeys, but the protocol is online, and you can read those details later. Thank you for your time.
Next up is Melissa Tedrow.
Thank you for this opportunity to publicly support Resolution 275 on behalf of the Humane Society of the United States, the nation's largest animal protection organization. My name is Melissa Tedrow, and I'm the Wisconsin State Director for HSUS. And I would like to extend my organization's sincere thanks to Supervisor Mantano and all of the co-sponsors for your leadership on this resolution urging the University of Wisconsin-Madison to halt plans to conduct maternal deprivation studies on monkeys. My organization works to catalyze the scientific development and implementation of what are known as the three Rs, so alternative methods that have the potential to replace animal use, reduce the number of animals used, or refine animals used to minimize their suffering. We have expert staff members who have worked for many years in animal research laboratories, including with primates. While the HSUS is not calling for an immediate end to all animal research, there are some research studies that should be prohibited outright. This study on infant monkeys is such a case. Consider the following, and you've heard much of this so far in our time together tonight from other people. Maternal deprivation studies on animals have been carried out for decades with no clear value for humans, but very obvious negative effects and severe suffering for the animals involved. Indeed, there are extremely high costs to the animals, explained in detail in the Resolution itself, and again, we've heard that from others tonight. This proposed experiment, moreover, does not appropriately or accurately model the diverse experiences of humans with challenging rearing histories. The study of mental health is extremely important, we'd all agree on that, and effective treatments are certainly needed. However, further investment in decades-old animal models with unknown and unclear links to human outcomes is simply a waste of limited research dollars. The University of Wisconsin-Madison now is one of eight national primate centers largely funded by the National Institutes of Health, although the funding of these centers is on the decline as questions about the value of primate research and its financial costs increase. As a matter of fact, by next year, there will be only seven national primate centers, as Harvard University has decided to close its stores, to its center stores due to future funding concerns. As the limits of animal research are increasingly recognized, the development of innovative alternatives is booming. This is the way of the future. Just one example is the recent announcement from IBM about the development of a brain-like chip that will emulate the brain- chip that will emulate the brain's abilities and has the potential application of a neuroscience modeling. The military itself is investing heavily in this project. And I've sent you, before tonight's meeting, I sent you a copy of that press release along with my testimony. This is the kind of cutting-edge research and funding that UW-Madison should be seeking if it wants to be the leader in the biomedical field. The outcry over this proposed study, for me personally, in the past month or so, from concerned scientists and ordinary citizens around the country has been nothing short of staggering. The ethical implications of this research must be taken into consideration. Surveys have shown that public support for animal testing, for animal research, wanes when it involves severe suffering for the animals. Time and again, UW-Madison has ignored the public's concerns. This ultimately stands to impact the school's reputation, donations, and even potentially the local economy. Passage of Resolution 275 would send a strong message to the university that it must take public concern seriously and that the community in Dane County wants to see UW-Madison end antiquated research and instead invest in research that actually benefits humans who are suffering from anxiety, depression, and so many other illnesses. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. That was all of the slips I had in support of Resolution 275. I have slips opposed that I'm going to call down, and then I know I have a couple supervisors, including the primary sponsor, the chief sponsor, who wish to speak to the resolution.
Thank you. I'm Eric Sandgren. I am on the faculty at the School of Veterinary Medicine here and also the director of the Research Animal Resources Center, which is the administrative unit on campus that has responsibility for general oversight of animals used in research. You'll hear from a couple of other people why this particular research does have great promise, why the university thinks that it's very important and, in fact, ethical to do this sort of research because of the positive consequences that can occur for people. I'd like to focus my comments right now on the resolution itself because I think it has some serious problems. First, there are errors of fact. So at three points in the statement, in the resolution, it says that there's no hope for a cure for cancer or any other major disease coming from this. Later on, no potential payoff in terms of finding a cure for a disease. And finally, that there's no expectation of medical gains for humans. That's actually false. This work has been reviewed extensively by physicians and by scientists in the biomedical field and specifically in the neurosciences. It was reviewed by a team of individuals on the National Institutes of Health Study Section. It was reviewed by the executive staff of the National Institutes of Mental Health. And all those individuals felt that it had great promise to provide real benefits. We can't know what those benefits will be, but only the best of the best research is funded now. It's extremely competitive, at best a fifth of the studies. This study was funded because those individuals feel, and these are speaking for the medical profession in the neurosciences area, they feel that it will have a possibility of very important benefits. So those statements in here are false. Another statement that is made in here is that these studies maximize the suffering of the animals subjected to the experiments. That statement also is false. To give you a sense of the context of what peer rearing means in this context, what this type of maternal deprivation is, there are cases at zoos where monkeys are rejected by the mother. If they can be put with a foster mother, that's done. If they can't, they're reared in a nursery. It's the same as what happens here. It's the same kind of nursery rearing. The animals are monitored and fed almost around the clock, watched by humans. When they get old enough to eat by themselves, they're put with another monkey. And so I think that gives you a sense, that gives you a sense, some context of what really is involved in this. It isn't some of the things that you've been hearing at all. Another comment that's made is that the University of Wisconsin has not kept pace with evolving societal norms. And that statement also is false. And I know that as well as anyone because I'm the individual who usually has to explain the research that's done, that has to describe the reasons for why the university decided to do something or decided not to do something. I speak routinely with reporters. I speak routinely with students and with other people who ask questions about this. We have had, for the last several years, a forum on animal research ethics. We've brought in ethicists to discuss this in a public context, and many of those ethicists have not supported animal research. Some of them have. So I think, from the academic perspective, the University of Wisconsin really is leading in terms of addressing the ethical issues that are associated with animal research. What we don't do is just agree blindly with one end of the spectrum. And I think the way this is written, not kept pace with evolving societal norms, I think evolving societal norms really shouldn't be taken to mean one particular side on this issue.
I'm Dr. Robert Golden. I'm the dean of UW School of Medicine and Public Health, but this evening I want to speak from a different perspective, that of a psychiatrist with more than twenty-five years' experience treating patients with severe, life-threatening, treatment-resistant depression and anxiety disorders. Right now, as we speak, immense attention is focused on what I think is the most frightening public health crisis we've experienced in quite some time, the Ebola virus outbreak. We are understandably pouring resources into intense research efforts, which includes, by the way, the use of non-human primates. Yet just about every week in our country alone, the number of deaths from suicide exceeds the cumulative worldwide deaths from Ebola. So why do we not have the same sense of urgency, the same commitment to do all that we possibly can to save lives and prevent the horrific suffering of the patients and their families whose lives are destroyed by mood and anxiety disorders? Over the course of my career, quite frankly, I've been disappointed to see only small incremental advances in our treatment options for these patients. Going back a few decades, we saw the advent of Prozac, and quite frankly, while it offered a safer and more acceptable side effect profile, it wasn't more effective than the earlier generation of tricyclic and MAO inhibitors. A much more important breakthrough, in my opinion, were new forms of psychotherapy, including cognitive behavioral psychotherapies. But I continue to tell you, from many years of experience, the most severely ill patients with life-threatening depression do not have the capacity, while they are severely depressed, to concentrate and to do the work of psychotherapy. So we clearly need to create entirely new paradigms, not me-too drugs like the Prozac generation. We have to think outside the box and approach the challenge from a different perspective, and that is the great advantage of Dr. Kalin's work. Research progresses slowly over time. It took decades of work, including primate studies, to develop the polio vaccine. I have read Dr. Kalin's publications. They're in the most competitive, top-tier, peer-reviewed scientific journals, and at this point, it appears to be on track. No guarantees, but it appears to be on track. More important than my opinion, quite frankly, though, is the opinion of the top leaders, his competitors in the field, who get together and decide that his work is so promising that they will take money from the limited pot that's available to fund their resource and recommend that it be given to his. His grants have received the very top ratings and the outstanding category from neuroscientists who are competing with him to get their work funded. His papers are reviewed by his competitors who feel that they are worthy of publication because of the progress already being made in the very top journals in the world. Even as we continue this important, open debate about the appropriate use of animals in medical research, which is a gut-wrenching, difficult decision, we should at the same time focus on an issue where we can make a huge difference right now. This county does not provide adequate resources for the care and treatment of the mentally ill. We don't have enough psychiatric beds. What was once a national model for publicly-supported, community-based mental health services in Dane County has suffered from years of serial budget cuts. All of us should come together with a clear message that we want to put our resources where our mouths are and do what it takes to provide access to care for our neighbors and family members with mental illness, even as we push to discover more safer and more effective treatments. UW-Madison is fully committed to following all of the relevant regulations, policies, and requirements for the appropriate use of animals in medical research. And in fact, a careful review of the way Dr. Kalin's research protocol was handled confirmed that in this case, as in all others where we have looked, all of the regulations, all of the policies, all of the requirements were fully adhered to by UW-Madison. At this university, we hope to contribute to discovery of effective treatments for the most serious and refractory illnesses so that someday bipolar disorder and other illnesses can join polio and other diseases in a growing list of former diseases that are no longer seen anywhere in Dane County. In my opinion, a vote in favor of this resolution is a vote against providing an important new avenue for hope for countless patients and their families. Thank you.
So I'm Dan Ulrich. I'm the Associate Vice Chancellor for Research Policy at UW-Madison, and I oppose the resolution. I first want to say that I support this research. I believe it's important, as you've heard from Dr. Dean Golden, and that it will be conducted responsibly. For today, I'd like to address some of the misleading statements in the resolution and provide a few other insights. So first of all, the resolution states that the research is unnecessary with no link to cures. You've heard Dr. Sandgren talk about that a little bit. I'd like to elaborate. I disagree strongly on both those counts. First of all, unnecessary, we've heard from Dr. Golden, that the work is needed to address a major public health issue. Regarding no link to cures, this statement reflects what I think is a naive understanding about how biomedical research works. Okay? That thinking reflected in the statement is that one experiment leads to a cure. It doesn't work that way. Cures come at the end of a series of experiments, each one contributing progressively toward a medical breakthrough. You can't tell just the last experiment. Okay? So to deny the importance of an early experiment to the birth of a cure would be like denying the importance of my great-grandmother to the birth of me. I don't think that's fair. Okay? In that progression of experiments to a cure, this work lies in a phase that's called basic research. In basic research, you've heard ethicists talk about the pros and cons of research. Basic research is often underappreciated by ethicists because you can't say, oh, this is what this research has produced, because it's often a few lengths away from that cure. Okay? What is basic research? It's aimed at determining how things work, in this case, how the brain works. Basic research is the foundation for the majority of our medical discoveries. Bottom line is, it's far easier to fix something if you know how it works normally and what has changed when something goes wrong. Okay? So the important fact, this important fact of the importance of basic research is recognized by the National Institutes of Health, and that's why basic research is an important part of the NIH research mission. And it's also why basic research is an important focus of research at institutions like UW-Madison. The resolution also states that the research is designed to maximize suffering. Absolutely not true. These animals do not have what the study's critics have referred to as crippling anxiety. This is not Harry Harlow revisited. It's not done, it's not Harry Harlow revisited. As you've already heard, this is what's done when the mother rejects a newborn. This often, or it most often happens with first-time mothers. It's also similar to rearing in a neonatal intensive care clinic for premature babies. So that's the protocol. Sure, the experiment is designed to produce animals with elevated levels of anxiety. However, the animals are still in the normal range of temperament. In fact, if you were to look at the animals in a mixed group setting, you would be hard-pressed to pick out the peer-reared animals from the maternally-reared ones. Okay? The differences are typically found with careful testing.
Yeah, one more.
Okay? So this brings me to tours of the primate center. When we discussed a previous resolution here, we offered the county board a tour of the primate center. Very few of you took us up on it. The offer stands. You've heard, okay? So you've heard a lot of opinions, a lot of statements, and a lot of the statements you've heard tonight we would disagree with. So what I would suggest is if you're going to vote on this resolution, I would encourage you to first tour the facility, and please make sure you're aware of the facts. Many UW people would be happy to talk to you about this issue. Also regarding tours and educating the public on issues of transparency, the primate center itself has a strong track record in this. In the last five years, they've reached out to about 24,000 people. This includes, on average, thirty to forty onsite group visits a year. Finally, bad things happen to people. We have all dealt with people, family and friends, who suffer mental illness, anxiety, depression, sometimes leading to suicide. And when something like that happens to someone we love, then we ask, why doesn't somebody do something? That's what this research is about.
I will give the opportunity to supervisors who have asked to speak, though, to speak Supervisor Root and Supervisor Mantano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll keep my remarks very brief. I appreciate the comments from the university. I received some of the same comments from one of the leaders of the Alliance for Animals, and I fully expect that the researchers at the university will support the substitute that I'll introduce, that'll indicate that there are potential gains. But as was stated by so many so articulately, there's a balancing test when determining the morality of animal experiments. How great is the gain? How certain is the gain versus how horrible is the suffering inflicted on the animals? How certain is that suffering? It's apocryphal to suggest that these monkeys are subjected to nothing more than what a child in a prenatal care facility would be subjected to. Leslie Hamilton read to you directly from the protocol, and there's great detail there about the suffering which is directly inflicted upon the animals. I wanted to read two items from the University of Wisconsin's letter. Because the monkey's biological response to stress is so similar to that of humans, peer-reared monkeys allow researchers to examine specific structures in the brain and specific chemicals that may be linked to anxiety disorders. And secondly, as a leading public institution, the primary role of the university is to tackle society's most pressing problems in the most ethical way as possible. Essentially, we have to balance the question, besides the gain versus the pain, we have to balance, how much are they like us? And if they're too much like us, it's inherently unethical. If you couldn't perform this experiment on a human, you can't perform it on an animal if that animal is so like us that they are identical to us. Yet these experiments are only effective because these animals feel pain and anxiety the way we do. Therefore, I would second the motion of those who suggested that these experiments are inherently ethical and that it behooves the county board to speak out in that direction. And I'd also suggest that normal animal experimentation, I've come up with the analogy of, say, you're trying to find a cure for tuberculosis. So you inject an animal with something that causes them to contract that disease. You then test a drug on them that may cure tuberculosis. Here, there's a series of protocols that are just designed to make the animal's life essentially a living hell and then kill it. So I think that this category of experiments, whether or not the experimenters can distinguish these experiments from those of Harlow, I think that these experiments clearly fall below the line of what acceptable research is. So thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Mantano. Supervisor Reddick. It sounds like people less.
I speak in favor of this resolution as well, and as so many people eloquently speak.
I speak in favor of this resolution as well, and as so many people eloquently spoke today, I agree that these studies are unethical. I support the resolution to halt it.
Thank you. I'll read into the record, slips in support, William Stern, Dawn Saban, Ray Ford, Charlie Talbert, Teresa Froyd, Debbie Fields, Sarah Andrews, Matt Kozlowski, Margaret Stern, Paul Romeo, Catalina Johnson, Diane Everson, Leslie Crocker, Suni Kaler, Eric Doak, Jeff Stanek, Ken Crocker, and Patricia Bensley. Registering in opposition, Buddy Quano, and Jeremy Levin. Registering in support, Sheila Hart. We just have a few minutes, but before we could continue, we could discuss it, we need a motion on the resolution. Is there a motion?
Move to table. Based on, we've only heard so.
The motion will be to postpone definitely.
I move to postpone definitely.
Is there a second to postpone definitely?
Second.
Is there a discussion?
I'm not sure. If there's just no motion.
If there's no motion, it would be the same impact. Do you want, do you want?
Postpone definitely.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is approved, and it is postponed.